This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council come to order. Clerk will call.
Joyce Elder?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Terry McLung?
Yep.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
E. Perkey-Pile?
Here.
James DeVito?
Yeah.
We have six.
Everybody please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next will be approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
Second.
I have a, actually in your package you should have a blank ordinance that's entitled to ordinance amending the City of Eureka Springs Personnel Policy Handbook. This is just to make an adjustment to our, does everybody have one?
I don't think I got one.
It was in your box.
Can you make some copies?
No, it wasn't.
That's right. It was just basically to be put on this agenda to, okay, we'll make you copies of it.
Mr. Ross, sorry.
Business?
Yes, new business number five.
And what is it?
It's basically IRS has changed some of the rules as far as allotments for lunch on trips unless it's a overnighter, you're not allowed to put lunch on credit cards or be reimbursed for it, I should say. And it'll be defined in the, as soon as she gets it back up here. It's kind of like a housekeeping issue. But it needs to be changed in the personnel policy to do so. Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir. Under unfinished business number one, I'd like to delete that from the agenda at this time.
A second to it. Unfinished business?
Uh, number one?
Me?
Okay. Delete it at this time.
Number one, traveling exotic animals, that one?
Do you need a second? I seconded.
Okay.
Okay.
I had to laugh at that.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is this to postpone or just delete totally?
Delete at this time.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
Um, unfinished number two, Dwayne Allen's email. Uh, that wasn't at all what he and I talked about in regards to yard waste.
That's what he sent me and that's what I'll send y'all.
Yeah.
You want postponing?
I don't know. Um, we were talking about a couple of contacts he needed to make so we could do this thing. I don't have the paperwork in front of me that I had brought up before about it has to be, we have no other options.
Okay, so you have motion to postpone?
Yeah.
With a second?
Yeah, so at least the next meeting, it's time to get together.
Who's going to be the second?
Second.
David Mitchell, go. All right. All right. And Mr. Perkey-Pile?
Uh, yeah. The, I've been informed that the owner of the circus involved in this has traveled 12 hours. What?
It got taken off, so she's.
Yeah, there's no point at this, if it's not on the agenda. Counsel comments. Okay.
Or public comments.
I mean, yeah, public comments.
Mr. McLung?
Yeah, uh, the new business number one, I don't think that's necessary at this point in time.
Yeah, it's postponed.
Oh, and besides, they often we forgot to ask them.
Well, I mean, then maybe, then maybe it needs to be discussed because I don't think we need to schedule them.
Okay.
You know, if they're $1,800 apiece.
Right, for just an appraisal. Each, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you, you making most of it off, delete it from?
I'm thinking, I'll make the most of it to take it off, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay.
And then that would not be something we'd be able to be voting or even discussing on, the $4,000, okay. My question is about that too. Okay. Okay.
Y'all keep going, we don't have anything to talk about right now.
Okay, now who wants to get rid of the next one?
Which works for me, yeah.
Number, number two, three, and four can just on general press, no, I'm just kidding.
I thought we should put them off to next meeting, like they set them in.
Okay, so now you should have a copy of the, the ordinance?
Yeah, I got one.
Oh, you got one?
Got an extra one.
Okay.
So there was an agreement to put it on number five.
Okay.
We'll come back to that one then. All right, any further on the amended agenda? If not, all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. And this moves us to approval of the minutes for November the 10th, 2014. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second? Changes, deletions, corrections? If not, then all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
The minutes. Turning the minutes.
The minutes, I'm sorry. I keep saying agenda. Okay. All right, that moves us into commission, committee, authority, and expired terms. Um, let me just go through this and read those that are expired so everybody out there will know if they're watching. Uh, for planning position one, Steve Beecham expired seven, one to 14. He needs to get renewed. Uh, position Mickey Snyder is a temporary, hers expired one, one, 17, but she's holding it down to four for that position until someone else applies for it. CAPC, none, hospital position number two, Susan Tortolone, and I hope I said that right, forgive me Susan if I didn't, expired six, 14, so she needs to renew. Uh, we have a vacant position number six at Parks, and cemetery position number two is vacant, and position number four, Hannah Romanski, expired two, 15 to 14. So, everybody that's on the list, come back and renew if you want to. If not, we need to find other people to fill your position. Okay, that brings us to public comments. And, okay, I want to say Kristen Para is the only one on the list.
Hi, how are you? I'm good, honey.
Good. Go ahead and say your name for us, please.
My name is Kristen Para, I'm one of the co-owners with the Carson and Martin Circus, and I just wanted to take this time and thank you guys for letting us be here on November the 5th. We had a lot of supporters come out and enjoyed the show. I would suggest if it comes up again, if you guys have any concerns about the animals or anything, that you might instead of banning the issue altogether, that you might just put in place maybe an application of some sorts that would allow us to apply in advance, you know, specifically for the animals. We traveled all over the United States and in several different cities over the United States, there are different applications and permits that we must, we must obtain to be able to have the animals in the communities, so you might think about that. And also, I would like to leave this with you. This is your kids enjoying our elephants and getting a very unique experience. What we do and what we pride ourselves is, we go to different communities like yours all over the United States and have the kids come out and they get to be up close with the animals, actually learn about them, get to know them, you know, feel them, feed them, and we hope that they go off then falling in love with the elephants and helping to do what they can and to help save them in the wild and stuff. So, here's a couple of pictures for you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
And if you guys have any questions or anything, well, then welcome to answer them for you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Okay, that moves us into number two under new business, the CAPC at Lawrence ordinance. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Anybody want to jump in? Ms. Snyder?
Do we have an ordinance on there?
Yes, we do.
Have, since I was missed half, most of the meeting last time, did we do anything on this other than get it together? I mean, there's been no reading because we're still going back and forth, right?
Mr. McLung?
Uh, yeah, in the box was the ordinance that had been prepared by Mr. Ragsdale and Mr. Ritchie in regards to all the positions which we had discussed, because originally we'd talked about when it was submitted as just doing it at large, and now we're, I think, leaning towards the, all, making all the positions available. Uh, and so that is the ordinance I would hope to see read this evening, and so I guess, I guess to discuss it should be, should make a motion to read, uh, this ordinance.
Give it a number.
Give it a number and give it a read.
Second.
Now, which one are we doing?
Uh, yeah, and I think there's a, there's a, there's a 1124 edition, apparently.
Section Ragsdale Ritchie.
Under section one, it specifies that Carol County rather than Eureka Springs.
Oh, okay. Okay. This is a motion and a second. Stand by for real call. Can we get away with it, just a regular voice? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, stand by.
Number will be two, 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 zero. An ordinance amending chapter 2.56 of the municipal code pertaining to the Advertising and Promotion Commission for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, whereas ACA 26-75-605 provides that four members of the Advertising and Promotion Commission, the commission, shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, and the one member who shall be, from the public at large, may reside outside the municipality but within the county where the municipality is located, if so provided by ordinance, and, whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to expand the eligibility for membership on the commission to include individuals as long as they are residents of Carroll County, Arkansas. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, that chapter 2.56.01 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended in its entirety as follows. Section one, chapter 2.56.01 created, the City Advertising and Promotion Commission is created. The commission shall be composed of seven members as follows. Four members shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, and the owner or manager shall reside within Carroll County, Arkansas. At least three of these members shall be owners or managers of hotels, motels, or restaurants, and shall serve for staggered terms of four years. Two members shall be members of the governing body of the municipality, and selected by the governing body, and shall serve at the will of the governing body, and one member shall be appointed by the mayor from the public at large, who shall reside in Carroll County, Arkansas, and who shall serve for a term of four years. Members of the A&amp;P Commission serving at the time this ordinance takes effect shall continue in office for the balance of the terms to which they have been previously appointed, for the resulting from expiration of a regular term or otherwise, a vacancy on the commission in any of the four tourism industry positions, or in the at-large position, shall be filled by appointment made by the remaining members of the commission, with the approval of the governing body of the city. Section two, all ordinances or resolutions and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. In the event any one or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect, such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein.
Ms. DeVito?
Move to approve, what was it, two, 22?
Twenty-two, twenty.
Move to approve ordinance two, 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 zero on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Discussion.
Okay, let's go ahead. Go ahead.
The way I read this is, the entire commission can reside outside of the city limits.
Mm-hmm.
I thought we were looking to have one member reside outside of the city limits, so we can have the entire commission living in the county.
Good. So I'm gonna see if I've got businesses here.
And that seems to.
Yes, go ahead.
And that seems to match the state statute, which specifically also allows that same thing. My question was, if any of the owners or managers of any of those five positions no longer manage or own, does that come under that third sentence down, whether resulting from expiration or otherwise? In other words, if they were the manager and they're no longer the manager, can they still set out their term on, on the CAPC? Because it doesn't say they can't, it, it just doesn't say, and I'm, I just wanted to know how you handle it.
You have to be, and if you aren't, then you're out.
Shall be owners or managers in the tour industry. I'm just, just wanted to be sure.
Shall be means it's mandatory, basically.
Oh, that's why I was reading it, that's, double check.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, my question was, and it's along the lines of James's, but slightly different, they have to be, the members shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, it doesn't say in Eureka Springs. Didn't it say that previously? This was for tourism businesses in Eureka?
It should say that.
Well, that's what I would think. I'm looking at the city attorney.
I didn't draw it, but yes, it would, the way it's written, it would allow them to be in.
Green Forest, Berryville, Alprin. Okay, so do we need to add a clarification line to that saying within city limits or within the Eureka zip code? How do we want to do that?
You would want it to be within, because the jurisdiction of the commission is within, you would want it within the city.
City limits, okay.
They have to be tax collectors, I'm sorry.
In the tourism industry within city limits, which makes them a tax collector. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Does that need an amendment, a motion to amend?
You would have to have a motion to amend if you want to change it, yes.
Okay. Well, let's get the, yeah, okay, so I make a motion to amend. Four members shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry within the Eureka Springs city limits.
I'll second that.
For a discussion on it?
May want to add that in that first paragraph too?
Where at, Mr. Ritchie?
Just because it, it says the same, well.
Yeah, yeah, that needs to be amended too.
Yes.
Tourism industry within.
Eureka Springs city limits. So your motion to amend covers both amendments?
Yes, yes. Mending the ordinance in two places.
Ms. R. Second?
Second.
She seconded.
Yeah, Joyce seconded the whole thing.
Any further on this one? Okay, probably need to real call it.
Do we have to vote on the amendment?
Oh, okay, on the amendment, okay. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no.
The next sentence after that one, at least three of these members shall be owners or managers of hotels, motels, or restaurants, and shall, okay, at least three. Well, what would the other member with a business within the tourism industry be? What would that business be?
Shops?
No. But they don't collect the tax.
They can't, they can't be, they cannot be.
I forgot we got that done, oh.
So, wouldn't four of the members shall be owners or managers of hotels, motels, or restaurants because they're the only ones that collect the tax?
Okay, why does it have to be someone who collects tax?
I can answer that. So that all four are not motels, and so that all four are not restaurants.
Well, why do they have to be tax collectors as opposed to, like my shop?
Because the state legislation does not enable you to participate in the tax.
Right, but I mean, but what's, okay, because this was written by state.
This is only, this is only part of the enabling ordinance.
So because this part doesn't cover that, the other part does.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we didn't know. Because that's how it used to be, it was shot.
We're just amending.
Okay, Mr. Perkey-Pile?
Well, to follow up on Joyce's question, typically, traditionally, who would that one spot be filled by, or what sort of business would fill that one spot?
It has to, it has to be hotel motel, it has to be lodging or restaurants, that's it. It can't be anybody else. Or the at-large seat, which is.
So then that sentence should read at least four, or four of these members shall be owners, not three, because that gives you the, the other fourth one. You're not saying the fourth one has to be a manager of a hotel, motel, or restaurant, so who would that be?
I, I was just speculating that all four could not be, three could be restaurants, three could be hotels, but all four cannot be from one segment of the industry.
No, but they have to be from those segments, and that's not what this says.
Mr. McLung?
It used to be a representative from the gift shop industry when it collected could be on there.
Right.
But that was your four.
But that's not the case. So, all four of these members then should be owners or managers of hotels, motels, or restaurants, because they're the only three businesses that collect the tax. So all four of them should be members of that, not just three of them with one sticking out there, member of something else.
Can we just add the word assorted, your attorney?
Assorted.
Well, so we don't get all motels or all restaurants, and we don't want necessarily stick to two and two, that's not how it's going to work. So, split between the two, how would we word that?
Well, you would have, if you wanted it to definitely be part one and part another, you'd have to change the wording. But I think actually that wording is probably a holdover from when there was a debate of whether to include things like tourists and other tourist.
Yeah, it was one we all collected. Yeah, it was one we all collected.
So that, that language is probably just a holdover from that.
So, should we remove?
Although it's, although it's on the state. I believe it is straight out of the state, but I think it's a holdover of that.
For us, so. Should we remove the line, at least three of these members, or should we change it to number four to make it, these four shall be from hotels and restaurants and then?
I don't think it's necessary to necessarily change it one way or another unless you do have very strong feeling that you definitely want two from one industry and two from the other, or at least, or at least one from one industry and three from the other or whatever.
That's why I said assorted.
It, it's still, the way you're reading it, you're leaving the door open for somebody to be the manager of something other than a hotel, motel, or restaurant to occupy that fourth seat. That isn't what you mean, but that's what it says.
I agree with her.
Mr. Mitchell?
By omission. I'll ask Mr. McLung, at this point in time, the members that are on the CAPC, is any, anybody one of the four not, not in the restaurant or hotel business? There all are?
They all are.
But when you do read this, it says at least three of these members shall be owners are, and it doesn't say four, it says three shall be, so it does leave one open.
That's the carryover.
And I'm not too sure that it's such a big deal that one isn't open even though they're not collecting the tax. If we're going for representation and to open it up a little bit for tourism industry, so what's one person that's not one of the tax collectors going to do?
Ms. DeVito, ahead.
You have to go back to the body of the enabling legislation, which we don't have here.
I have it right here.
Okay, well, it's quite a few pages and it goes in depth and.
No, not really, it just says what we said here.
Mr. McLung, go ahead on your question.
Well, I, you know, personally, I think it's because the tax collectors themselves should have a majority say in, in what's done, because after all, they are the collectors.
But one person is not a majority, one person just brings a perspective.
No, no, but, but four of them in, in the, are the collecting majority.
And the at-large could be anything.
Two, yeah, two, two restaurant, two motel, or four motel, Howard broke out, I don't care.
Arkansas Code of 1987 annotated official Title VI Taxation, subtitle VI Local Taxes, Chapter 75 Municipal Sales Use Taxes, Subchapter VI Advertising and Promotion Commission. Number one, four members shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, and the owner or manager shall reside in the levying municipality, or if the governing body of the municipality provides for by ordinance, the owner or manager may reside outside of the municipality but within the county. It doesn't, at least three of these members shall be owners or managers of hotel, motels, restaurants, and shall serve for four years. So our ordinance matches the state.
Somewhere in there, it will be talking about tax collectors.
I didn't.
Because that's what we had to change when we went from everybody in town collecting versus adding, making the tax higher and going to hotels and restaurants only.
Ms. DeVito?
You have the ability to address your concerns with the at-large member. But if you do not collect the tax, then you should not be a representative. But they do make a leeway in that one seat, which is the at-large seat.
Plus these two spots, that's not a requirement.
Ms. O.
Then you have to change that three to a four.
Yes, you do.
Because if you don't have at least four members, owners, managers of hotels, of hotels, motels, or restaurants, and you only have three, then you have that one position that could be, you could argue that it has something, you could, it could be a real estate agent, because that has something to do with tourism. You just, you have to say what you mean, and you're not saying what, you don't intend for that fourth member to not be a tax collector, but you're not saying that. So if you just change the three to the four, what's the problem? It makes all four of them tax collectors then, and it makes it very clear what you, what you're trying to accomplish here.
Mr. McLung?
The reason I don't think we can change it is because that's state legislation, that's, that's the state. I don't think we can supersede the state. That's the way they have it worded.
But that isn't what the state says either.
Ours reads, and it's identical.
Four members shall be owners or managers of businesses in the tourism industry, and our attorney has told us before that our ordinance can be stronger than the statute but less than.
And the state says four. So we should say four.
So we could make it four and end this conversation.
I mean, this. Ms. Snyder?
Can we just put parentheses in front of the word at, and going through at least these, at least three of these, put those in parentheses and have, I'm sorry, after of, and then have, these members shall be owners or managers of hotels, motels, and restaurants. We leave the line like it is and just put parentheses from at through of.
Not sure what that would do.
No. It would show, it would show the main part being, these people will be, although the state thing says this, we have now changed our tax base, you know, who's collecting, we, we can either put a four, we can put parentheses, we obviously can't change it without state permission.
I don't know that the parentheses would, would really mean that.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make, make a motion and in the, in the fourth line, section one, that we scratch out at least three in the, in the numeral three and change and begin that sentence with the numeral four, or three, or four written out in four, the number four principle, in, in parentheses, and that takes care of it.
Second, I'll second that.
I second that.
Changing three to four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's real clean.
There's a motion, is there?
I'd be happy to, Anne.
So you're saying drop at least and put four of these members shall be.
Drop at least three.
The number three, and then start with the word four.
At least three, drop that. Four of these members shall be.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
There was.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? Okay, so we're deleting at least three and writing in the word four. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, all in favor of the amendment to that paragraph, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, that is amended.
We still have to vote on the initial motion, yeah.
Okay, no further discussion, we'll go back to. No further discussion, we'll go back to the original motion. And we're probably, since it's been amended, do we have to do a roll call? Do we do?
We haven't ready yet.
All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried.
Yeah, we did, we did. I'm sorry.
Okay. No further on this one, moving on.
Oh, no.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2220 on its first reading.
We did.
We did.
We just did.
I thought we just voted to read it.
And then James asked to approve it.
Then I motioned to approve it on this first reading.
So we, first read's done.
First reading is done.
Do you want your money, go for two?
No.
Okay. All right, next to discussion of metered parking spaces for special events. Mr. DeVito and Mr. Perkin.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
I'll pass these around.
Sure.
The reason I brought this up was that during October, the busiest month of the year, on three consecutive weekends, we had all of the parking spaces around the courthouse being used for other purposes. I'm concerned that we're having more and more car shows. We've added Volvo to our lineup. There was some problems, was it the Miata's or, I can't remember which one rented all, rented all the spaces and then only four cars showed up. So, you know, while I enjoy things downtown, what I'm passing around are pictures from years past when we use Fest, Center Street as a festival site. And that's something we've been talking about for years and years. Yes, it doesn't work with the car show people. But the other thing that occurred on one of those weekends in October was the Oktoberfest celebration, which took up all the space between the courthouse and the auditorium. That could have easily been moved to Center Street, like you see the pictures there of a festival that was on Center Street. I, I think we have to come to the realization that we might want to be precluding these car shows from tying up all these parking spaces downtown. We know, we need those for the customers that come in. Hopefully, in the course of a day, those meters could turn over two to three times. The merchants rely on that turnover for their customer base. And if you have all those parking spaces taken up with car show people all day long, you don't get that turnover, and I might even suggest that you don't get the revenue produced from the customers that would normally be here on a Saturday. Pine Mountain seems to enjoy having those car shows up there. So I think we seriously need to look at this. We lost quite a few parking spaces, three consecutive weekends in a row during the month of October, when we needed that parking the most. So I think it's something that council should entertain. If it's, if this is an administrative decision, I don't know. I don't necessarily feel that we need to have an ordinance for it. But I think it's something we need to be aware of and start to develop some kind of protocol for these events and to try and move the events that we can to Center Street and maybe think about, you know, the effect that tying up all those parking spaces downtown is having.
If, if I may speak, here's a second. It would probably need to be in form of a motion if you're limiting where these, these events cannot take place.
It's disgusting.
Just as, we also have...
It's disgusting first, though.
Resolutions and ordinance as to where things can take place. So Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
Somehow I'm, I have this confused. I thought when we were discussing closing Main Street and got into that heated, not heated, but that lively discussion about closing it and having, the merchants weren't going to get people in their stores and we were going to have all the booths and all that up. I thought it came up to be, it turned out that the, that the mayor has the authority to close streets and, and control, control, control those activities. So it would be a mayoral or administrative function if the mayor wanted to, to close Center Street, to move things down there. It seems like the purview of that falls with the mayor, but I could be wrong.
A lot of that issue is where they want to have the event.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I understand.
And I'm afraid if you start limiting them, they will just pull the event.
Well, and that's what's my point, is I just don't know if it's council, that we control it anyway. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Knight, go ahead.
You were, you've been here, what, 20 years or so? And I don't remember when we switched it over. Were you still, still here when during the antique car show, they would do the parade and then they would park on Spring Street? Okay.
They would also park on Center Street.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Because that's how it used to be for any of the car shows, but especially the antique car show, but any of them. They would park on Spring Street, Main Street, Center Street, in the regular stuff and leave the big lots open. They quit doing that, I forget exactly which reasons were used, but they quit doing that, saying that, well, like I said, I forget what reasons were used, but they quit doing that. And it worked actually really nice, because then people were walking all up and down all the streets, looking at the cars, going in the shops, going in the restaurants, going everywhere. And it was really, really nice. When they park them down here, even though I've got two shops right there that I manage, parking down here, and the last couple of years, they've only had them here until like 2:00 in the afternoon. But no people would come down and look, and then they were done. You know, they would follow the cars down and they wouldn't be spending their time up on all the streets with all the shops, which I thought was kind of a bummer. If we could go back to parking on the street, we do lose that parking, but I don't think it's as much as the parking we'd lose in the lots all the way down Main. And this way, people are looking at the cars and going in all the shops. So they're enjoying their antique cars or their, whatever cars are in there that week and the shopping.
Mr. McHale.
Is that what you were discussing, the cars?
Just the use of parking lots.
Well, I can say this about one thing, is that the taste of Eureka when it, when it was on Center Street, because I participate, I mean, it was, well, I'm probably in every one of those pictures somewhere. It was, it was a lot of fun.
Centrally located.
And, yeah, it was a great spot. We, you know, it had the waiter races and they did everything right there. And it was, it was, it was a good thing. It's certainly not a bad place. It's manageable because they can, you can still keep that, I don't know, north end, I guess you'd call it, and Main, off, uh, Mountain Street. It, you know, to access in for the parking lots and such, like from behind the old McHale Riley Building.
Ms. Wilkerson.
I just wanted to state, last year when we looked at increasing the parking lot spaces to $6, I know I talked to y'all about, because we could rent, we rented all the parking lots from here and around the Basin Bath House, and we no longer rent over there. Very rarely, we rent maybe some by the art wall for musicians up in Basin Park. But there has not been anything rented for car shows over there, and we just try to keep it here. Now, there was huge issues this past October with the parking. And the people that, the car show people that usually rent the parking lot is a courtesy for their participants to come and shop downtown. Now, a lot of them don't take, you know, don't take it up, that offer up. And the car show promoters have been really good with me, because I'll come by and check on the lot and I'll call them and they'll say, you know, they'll open the lot at 2:00 and stuff like that. And next year, they're not going to get the whole parking sp, you know, the whole lot. And they told me that. They'll get maybe 10 spaces they're going to request, because they don't want to spend the money either. You know, so I do understand concern about the car shows and the parking lots being taken up. But so far, the promoters have been understanding and they've been good about lessening their, their allotted spaces. Because that is our purview to see how many they can rent. And so it's like, you know, we've went down from two lots to just one lot, and now it's going down even lesser based on the participants. Now, like the Oktoberfest, I guess that's something for y'all to decide, the mayor to decide, department heads to talk about moving things to Center Street. But as a concern for the car shows, that's how we're working it, you know. It's, it's a small step, you know, but every year it's getting a little bit better, I think, you know, regarding that part of it.
I just, I would like to take this, this moment and commend you on that, Diane, for following up with that, because you have, you take that upon yourself to do that, so thank you.
Well, it is a concern of mine that, you know, maybe if we said, "No, you can't park your cars down here and take up the whole lots," they might go, "Well, we'll just go to the town that wants us here." So what I see as possible compromise is if, if you're standing in Main Street and you're looking at the courthouse, that lot on the right-hand side, you could park a lot of cars in that lot and not in the spaces allotted for the cars, because you have all those bus parking spots and all those parking spots there. So if, if we kept the parking spots on the left side of the courthouse open and parked them with, you know, their own people to park them in, in rows, you could get a lot of...
Are you talking about the, the south side? Where the buses have to pull in and turn around?
Right, yeah.
That's, that's, that's an issue with that, too. We have to, we couldn't rent them the bus loading zone area, because the buses, if we do have a bus coming in, we need that space for them to turn around. Very rarely, we shut down the whole parking lot due to event. We try to keep it open for the buses to turn around there. But that is a good option if we knew buses were coming that way.
Mr. Perkin.
But Ms. Wilkerson, you, you've indicated that you're, you're shrinking some of these down to like 10 spaces.
Yes, and I've talked to the promoters, and they're, they understand, and they don't want to spend the space, uh, the, spend the cost, you know, for a space if they're not going to use it either.
Does that also include the Eureka? Uh, does the Eureka, because it, that takes up a lot of space.
Yes, it does. He hasn't submitted his application for 2015 yet, so I don't know. But, yeah, he...
Could that be relocated to Center Street? I mean, would that make sense, or is...
That's, yeah, I see exactly that it's, it has to, it involves the running through, you know, the finish and the beginning, I mean, the finish line is right here. The beginning and the finish line is right here.
That could be moved to First Street.
It could, I mean, it's, it's something that we've...
Not easily.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not...
I don't see why not.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm not a liberty to talk for the promoter. I know we've talked about staging it somewheres else. I mean, keeping the finish line here but staging the other thing somewheres else. But I don't know what his plans are.
Oh, I understand why everybody wants to be at ground zero in Eureka Springs, because that's the spot, but...
Right.
It's important to the merchants in the community also.
Oh, I under, I understand that.
Any further?
Diane.
Thank you.
No, any further on this, and if not, we're moving on.
Okay.
Moves this to number four. Discussion, uh, resolution for American Civil Liberties Union, ACLU to step in on the fluoride issue. Yes, ma'am?
Could you ask if Laura Coker is out there?
I'm sorry?
If Laura Coker is out there.
Is Laura Coker out front? Please come in, please.
We need to open the topic.
Oh, there's...
Oh, there she is, okay.
There she is.
Wanted to make sure she was here first, okay.
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I'm unable to, I need to get on the net to get my Google document.
I don't think we have Wi-Fi here in the courthouse.
I don't, I don't know how to do that. Okay, I'm...
Be careful setting it on that stove, because it is, it is warm.
Anyway, thank you.
If you need this, you can. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm asking her to do a presentation if you'll give us the information that we need in regards to this ACLU resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you yield it into her?
Yes.
Your turn to her on the floor. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. In brief, practice of medicine is always individual, performed by individuals, and although the state has regulations of credentials, licensure and appropriate procedures, it's always individual. I'll briefly read the Arkansas Legislature, Arkansas Medical Practices Act. The practice of any type of profession requiring special education and skill that promotes the healing of the human body that relates to the prevention of illness or disease. The law requires a license to diagnose, treat, prescribe for, palliate or prevent any human disease. Further, it states, "A sufficient individual history and physical examination by a qualified licensed health practitioner to diagnose any disease, ailment, injury, deformity, physical or mental condition whereby treatment modalities, drugs, surgery, manipulation, electricity or physical, mechanical or any other means whatsoever is indicated, recommended or prescribed." Bottom line is the legislature, and no state or federal agency can impose prescription on mass population. You can, there's no precedent for it. And medical law, medical legal law simply doesn't provide for it. I'd like to have our community, having stood up three times, I understand, voting against fluoride. I'd like to have our community request the assistance of ACLU or any other appropriate public law advocacy group, so that pro bono, zero cost, we file an injunction immediately against what is a wrong dose, wrong route. It'll contain toxins that evidently the water standard 60 is, they're not able to supply any compound containing fluoride that meets that clean water standard. The legislature, the Congress, excuse me, in 1996 under Clinton and with a huge majority, passed new regis, uh, new pesticide regulations. You can't use a compound that interferes with neural or hormonal balances in the body, biologic functions. The history of fluoride includes deliberately altering mental status, lassitude, confusion, drowsiness by the Nazis and the Stalin regime to impose a condition of less ability to fight against their abusers. So there's mental effects that are proven, we don't know what dose. Those doses are not being reported publicly, and they should be. There's certainly supposition that direct neurologic damage to the fetus and to the infant and young children is occurring, suspicion of other very serious consequence in intellectual and behavioral development. The history also includes the prescription of fluoride to suppress thyroid hormone. So historically, it interferes with hormones. Now, we know in fact that the pineal gland accumulates calcium fluoride. So it calcifies, including incorporating fluoride into the pineal gland, which produces the neurochemicals serotonin, which is advised, can't read that, but anyway, serotonin and the hormone melatonin, which is crucial to brain chemistry and all biological functions. So, yeah, so, okay, so what we can do then, each of us has the individual right of claiming an exemption. And this is part and parcel of our entire legal system. You can have a medical exemption for cardiac reasons, end-stage renal disease, because you need to avoid salt, any of these other things. You can have a personal exemption, that is, I received the risk benefit profile and I choose not to participate in drinking fluoride in my public water. It's also absorbed in the skin. So you can't avoid it unless you are completely filtering all your, all your water into your house. But then you can't go eat in a restaurant. You can't enjoy the local food, because they will all contain fluoride as a consequence. Every living thing will absorb this fluoride from the water. And so religious exemption, our Native Americans, this city was founded, as I understand it, because these are sacred springs. And the city was founded because the, it was intended to be a healing center, and part of that was clean air, clean water and healthy, healthy natural foods. That's the foundation of the city, and it should remain that. So if they impose fluoride in our water, that will indelibly change forever the very nature of this city. So I'm telling you, there is no truly legal cause for the imposition of mass fluoridation. We know medically it's unsound, we know scientifically it's very bad, badly advised, particularly at the higher doses. And the key to fixing this is we get public, we get individual exemptions, we register them with... We register them with the governor's office and also with the schools. Every parent has the right to say, "I don't want my kid drinking fluoridated water or eating foods prepared with your fluoridated water locally." So I propose damages, first of all, to offset the cost that would be imposed by DDF, Delta Dental Foundation, for people failing to comply with the mandate. So if we get that 1.8 million for Carol Boone off the books, then we have no reason to impose fluoride. And they have no legitimate legal basis to impose it in the first place. And Carol Boone, now that they have said, 49 inquiries have not resulted in a single pharmaceutical quality, non-contaminated product to provide that fluoride. If they don't comply with the Standard 60, then they, if they impose that, they are liable for directly providing a pharmas, pharmaceutically impure product.
We've, no offense, but we've been down this road many, many times before. I need to know from you what you are asking council to do tonight.
Okay, well, I'm offering the city as the council the opportunity to request the assistance of ACLU or any other pro bono appropriate legal agency to file for an injunction and to help fight the pause, which is legislature is not lawfully empowered to prescribe medication, particularly on a mass-imposed basis.
So we need a resolution.
That we employ exemptions, and we register exemptions with the school for, for parents who refuse to have their children exposed, that we register them with the governor's office, because a vote is anonymous.
My, my suggestion would be to craft a resolution and come back to council so that we know what you want. Tonight, we have no idea. This is a nebulous, any pro bono organization, could be 1,000 pro bono organizations, with all due respect, we've, we've grown this thing. You have told us nothing new tonight.
Except that it will be...
Exemptions.
It will be pro bono using...
So my, my suggestion is craft a resolution and come back so that we have something to look at.
Okay. I will, I will simply stipulate that I'll gather some fellow citizens, and we'll file an independent lawsuit because we need to hurry. I understand they're going to impose it very early in January or late December, and we don't have time to really wait. So I simply wanted to offer, it, it looks better if the entire city council says, "Let's involve the ACLU," but it's not necessary.
With all due respects, we took a position in 2012. That was a few years ago.
And we haven't given up since.
And, and with all due respect, you know, citizen participation, y'all have every right to do whatever you want. Council did take a resolution opposing fluoridation.
Yes.
And I think, actually, 11th hour and 45 minutes, you know, a lot of this stuff should have been in a couple of years ago.
Well, I'm just hopeful that we can put a stop to this. And I do thank you, I don't deserve particularly respect, especially as I couldn't pull my document up. But I do want to thank you for your kindness, and I'll just offer it through the newspapers or selectively in the public, those who want exemptions for themselves or their children, and we'll seek whatever legal assistance we can get immediately to get at least an injunction. But I do thank you, I do very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Snyder.
Okay, so since I had to leave in the middle of the meeting last time, and I had asked the council to please look into, deal with whatever, having a resolution, asking the ACLU to step in for us, it was put on the agenda, was there any discussion at all?
This is the first time it's been on the agenda.
Okay, I was hoping someone would ask our city attorney to do. Okay, so what we're asking is if we could have our council say yes.
Make a motion.
We would like to have the ACLU file for us so it doesn't cost us anything. My question is, do we need a resolution? Or can we just openly say something?
When you have, has anyone talked to the ACLU at this point and asked them what they want?
On this meeting and this resolution or whatever, so we can, as she said, it's much more effective if you have the whole city council saying, "Yes, please help us." We already know we've got the citizenry. We need the council backing, and that's what I'm saying. Can we all just say, "Yes, please ACLU, come in?"
I mean, as Mr. DeVito said a moment ago, this council passed a resolution many months ago that said, "We oppose."
Right.
So have we had an offer of help from an ACLU?
We did not pursue the ACLU thing because we were working on it until things happened, and more than what happened here.
I don't, I have no idea whether the ACLU would...
Well, we don't know for sure either.
So I don't think...
And then the resolution we passed.
Would a verbal yes from the council need anything like a resolution? Or can we just...
A resolution is basically the, the council expressing its will. If the council passes a yes, send that resolution that we've already passed, then I don't see any problem with that resolution being sent to someone if you can find the appropriate person who would look at it.
Okay, so if I just say, "I would really like to do this," do I have y'all's backing on sending our previous resolution to the ACLU to hopefully step in pro bono and help us?
Yeah, the resolution's been passed, so that is a yes.
It's a public document. It's a public document, go for it.
I'm saying, can I get y'all to say, "Yes, please go do this?" That's what I'm saying. Okay, I can't say that.
Mr. McClain. No, that's just what I was going to say. You, you, they can take, she can take the document, you can take the document, but not as a representative of the city council, though.
Well, that's what I'm asking for.
Because it was passed by the city council.
Right.
That is, that is...
So why can't I then, as a council representative, turn it into the ACLU?
Because you don't have to present the council.
That's you. It's already passed, so it's, it's, it's part of the history of the city of Eureka Springs.
So I should be able to take to them, say, "This is what we did on this date. Would you help us out?"
You can call them and ask them as a citizen.
Correct.
Yes.
Why can't I do it as a councilman?
Because that, that is your authorization as a citizen to do that.
Confused, whatever, okay.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell.
I guess clearly, the whole council is, is not giving you the authorization to act on our behalf. You can take the resolution and do what you want. But the lady very clearly said something that distinctly stuck in my mind. She said you can ask for personal, independent...
Exemptions.
Exemptions. And nothing works better than grassroots. So it seems to me, if you want to go that route, you want to go with the ACLU, at this point in time, since it is the 11th hour, and it's obviously over, and it is law and everything at this point in time, a grassroots effort in the city or the county or wherever that it has led and gets enough personal exemptions would probably get you along quicker. But I don't still see council adding anything to the issue at this point to help it.
Ms. Eller, go ahead.
Okay, what we need is sample paperwork from Laura Coker. We need the sample thing that, that she wants people to fill out, asking for this. And if we had that sample, what she's talking about, and I'm surprised she didn't come with sample paperwork tonight because she was asking us to do something. But if we had that, then that could be printed in the paper, and everybody in the, in the, in the city who was interested in that could fill that thing out. But we need a sample, we need something in front of us to look at, and that has to come from Ms. Coker because she knows what she's talking about, and the rest of us only have a foggy notion of what it is she wants from us. So we need some kind of visual evidence of what it is she wants us to do, some sort of thing to fill out. And then we can go forward on that. The citizens can go forward.
Any further on this? Okay. If not, then we're moving to number five, which was added under the amendment of the agenda, approval of the agenda.
Motion to discuss.
Tag. All right. Go ahead. Mr. McClain. I would like, at this time, to make a motion to place a number to this and...
Read it. For passage? Second.
Suppose.
Oh, it's an ordinance, no.
Yeah, we've got to read it first and...
It's on first reading?
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Snyder.
We are in discussion, right?
No.
No.
Oh, yeah. That, that comes after we...
I can never keep that straight.
Okay.
The number will be 2221. An ordinance amending the City of Eureka Springs Personnel Policy Handbook, whereas it has been determined by the Eureka Springs Arkansas City Council that an amendment should be made to the Personnel Policy Handbook. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that the Eureka Springs Personnel Policy Handbook is amended in the following manner. A, that page 12 of the handbook is amended by having the second sentence in the first paragraph in the section titled "On-Duty Travel Leave", by having the second sentence deleted and amending the third sentence to read as follows. Quote, "For any on-duty travel leave that requires an overnight stay, the employee shall be reimbursed for a total of $50 per day," end quote. Section 2, that all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such, of said conflict.
Ms. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2221 on its first reading. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Go ahead. Ms. Snyder, since you want to discuss, go ahead.
Okay, you were talking, you used an example of lunch. My question is, not having ever had a handbook, which I would like to see, my question is, does $50 a day, is that specific to an item like lunch? Or does that include any expenses or gas, lunch, motel, the whole nine yards?
It has to be, any of it has to be for an overnight stay. That's the only time it's authorized.
But, but what I'm asking is, is there any breakdown of what things are...
I think it's $15 for lunch, 12 for breakfast, and I can't remember what dinner is.
Okay, is there like a gas thing? No, it's what can you turn receipts in, turn them in on in regards to what?
You turn them all in, but you're only limited by the City Personnel Policy.
What things can you turn receipts in for?
I have to read it again and look at it. I'm not sure. Do you know, Diane?
This is just dealing with the per diem for your food. This isn't talk about trial, uh...
Okay, because he doesn't, so he doesn't specify food. That's why I was asking.
It, it does.
It's just per diem.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Oh, I, okay.
Well, it looks like it's, the total's $50 a day is what has it...
Including everything.
Yeah.
It's regarding to food.
So we can, we can read it, I mean, we can go ahead and approve it in the second reading, we can... Yes.
Okay, so for a total of $50 per day for food, is what it should read?
Whatever that section is, they'll clear it up.
Well, you'd have to compare it to what it, what section 12 is.
Okay.
I don't have my...
I've never gotten one, I've asked for a handbook a lot of times.
Just approve it.
Yeah, let's approve it, and then we can amend it next meeting.
Now, what you, what you, what, I'm not sure, but I think the handbook was originally approved by resolution. And if that's the case, then this change should be approved by resolution also.
Should we put this on for the next meeting? In the meantime, we can look at it. We could all get copies of the handbook.
Yeah, is that a motion?
Yes.
No. I'll just vote on it. I mean, if we, if, if it has to be a resolution, we can change it at that time. You can't tell her she can't make the motion.
If we don't know, it's an ordinance or a resolution.
Okay, all right.
Did she get a second?
Okay, no, because we already have...
We already have a motion. It's approved on its first reading.
We have a motion and a second. Would you repeat the motion?
To approve ordinance 2221 on its first reading, and Mr. Perky piled seconded.
Okay, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. First reading's approved.
Now, in the meantime, though, somebody's got to look into this.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With nothing else, it moves us into agenda setting for next council meeting, which will be December 8. And as of now, that is the only scheduled meeting for the month of December unless council comes up where I find something that needs to be done, so...
Holy cow.
Floor's open? Mr. DeVito.
No, sir.
Mr. McClain. Yeah, I, just the, uh, the Finance Director said that he would have the new budget printed out for all of us, and, and so I would just like to have that... He did say that, yes. Yes, yeah, if we could have that, because we only have the one meeting next month, so unless you call for something special. And so if we could have it before the next meeting, that's all. Before, okay, I think he said on the next meeting, but you've got to get... Maybe, maybe he did, I don't recall. Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir. I'd like to see if it's possible to have a status report of commissions or committees, department heads, and possibly building inspector of just a brief some, kind of summation of how 2014 went and what they planned for 2015.
Is this in writing, I hope?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
And/or if they, you know, they chose to stand up there, that'd be fine. Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Snyder.
Nope, nothing.
Ms. Eller. Okay, council comments, Mr. DeVito.
Will you please get seconds on the two agenda items?
Second. Second. Better boy.
Thank you.
Mr. McClain. You got them, okay. Council comments, Mr. DeVito.
I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. McClain. Happy Thanksgiving, you bet. Safe travels.
Ditto.
Perky has a turkey birthday. Happy Thanksgiving.
Turkey birthday, poor turkey.
Turkey is a turkey. Ms. Snyder.
Happy Thanksgiving, safe Thanksgiving. I still have a retired husband who needs a good home.
Ms. Eller.
No, I...
All right, I announce this in the budget, I announce this in the budget meeting, but I have appointed Assistant Chief Billy Summers. I think he's Assistant Chief as the interim Fire Chief since our current Fire Chief, Mr. Reese Williams, is retiring. And then at the first of the year, he'll have this position till the first of the year. And then Mayor Berry can pick his own after that. Also have a list of events. November 27th, Happy Thanksgiving, offices, City Hall are closed Thursday and Friday. November 29th, Eureka Springs Art Bazaar. At the Ozzars Convention Center.
The Merritt.
December 4th is the 48th Annual Silver Tea at Crescent Hotel, 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. December 5th, Christmas Parade at 6:00 p.m., free trolley rides. December 6th, Christmas Tour of Homes, 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. December 6th, John Two-Hawks Christmas Concert at Auditorium, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. December 7th, Eureka Springs Classic Movie, Casablanca, at the Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. December 31st, Eureka Springs Christmas Forest at the Crescent. And every night, every Friday and Saturday and Sunday night, Snow Train Village at Gaskin Switch from 7:00 p.m. to, I'm sorry, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. We are adjourned.
Have a good Thursday, y'all. Hey, Nikki, Nikki?